Good evening, everyone. This is the special meeting of the DeKalb City Council, November 21, 2017. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please. Sue Herman.
Jacobson. Fanoukian.
Here.
Markwart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
We have two items on the agenda tonight for this special meeting. The FY 2018 proposed annual budget and the 2017 property tax levy. Even though they're listed as B and C on your agenda, it's been the request of Molly Talkington and Anne Marie Gora that we flip those. So the first item on the agenda will be item C, the 2017 property tax levy. And Molly, you're going to address this.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We've brought back the property tax levy options that you requested and we have the direction that you had at the joint council meeting. So the first change that we made is the funding level for police and fire pensions is at the 7.0 investment return rate. So you'll see that in the expenditures for the general fund, and then you'll see how that's reflected into the two options for the property tax levy. So if we want to turn to page five of your report, and it's also on the website just now. So the first option that we have is to adhere to what the Financial Advisory Committee recommended. That is to fully fund the police and fire pension at that lowered investment return rate through the property tax levy. It also keeps the IRF, the minimum amount that we have on the levy funded by the levy, and then we also have all of our kind of special levies listed as well. So in option one, the, and I'm going to refer to the, what we will call the extended levy because as we talked about a little bit last time is, we will formally give you the ordinance to adopt the debt service related to the city. It'll be included in the levy that you adopt, but then we'll turn around and give you an abatement to adopt that takes the debt service for the city off of the levy, so you don't see that on your property tax bill. So I've kind of narrowed the focus of this report just to focus on those levies that do impact the property tax bill. So the part of the debt that you will then abate and will pay from other services is not included in how I'll present the options to you. So when I say extended levy, that really means the part without the debt that you were going to pay with other services. So option one, if you go through, and I put all the levies on here, so you have the corporate levy, which we will, in the ordinance, have an amount in the corporate levy, but that is fully for the police and fire pensions. Then you will have the gen, the police and fire pension levies, the IRF levy, and then the FICA levy is actually not funded in either option of these property tax scenarios. You have the library levy, and then the debt service that we don't abate for the library. So in option one, the total income, that extended levy amount, is $9,333,920. So to fully fund the police and fire pensions at the 7.0 level, the expenditure total is equal to that income that we bring in on the property tax levy. The, this, there's no kind of shifting of funding to the general fund in this scenario to help pay for the police and fire levies. The potential impact, so I've been using the $150,000 home market value, but the taxable rate of that is a third, so $50,000. So the impact to the taxpayer, if nothing else changes, right, they didn't make significant improvements, if the assessor hasn't gone back and reassessed their houses, kind of all those kind of general caveats on that, if nothing changed from last year to this year, there would be a slight increase to the tax rate of .0978%, which would result in a $49 annual increase to the homeowner. And that would fully fed, uh, fully fund police and fire at that lower investment level and the $72,000 and change for the IRF levy, uh, funding through the property tax levy. So then I added on here kind of what the effect would be on the general fund balance, and it has three scenarios because we have talked about reducing the general fund at a 5% cut to expenditures, the 2.5% cut to expenditures, or just to meet the 25% fund balance target that you have in your financial policies. So the impact there in all three scenarios, we would be above the 25% policy. The second option is to implement a lower tax levy. So what this does is it funds, it brings in revenue on the tax levy at the same rate as last year. So the impact to the homeowner would be zero. Again, caveat, nothing changed from last year to this year, but that would mean for police and fire at the 7% investment rate, the general fund other revenues such as sales tax or, you know, income tax, those other sources that come into the general fund would absorb $446,000 roughly of that. So you're shifting a portion of that funding to the general fund other revenues, and that would also eliminate the levy for IRF. This gets you a little bit further away, right? You remember your financial policy on the property tax levy, 1A is to fully fund police, fire, and IRF through the tax levy. So last year, you, you didn't meet 1A. This year, in both of these proposals, it doesn't meet 1A because you're not fully funding IRF, but in the first proposal, you're at least leaving minimal funding for IRF, but you fully fund police and fire. In the second option, you're no longer funding IRF with tax levy, and you're shifting $446,000 roughly to the general fund other revenue sources. And I will leave it up to council for discussion.
May I paraphrase what I think I heard you say?
Yes.
And I'd like to do this and then get some discussion. On option one, we are funding all pension obligations for a variety of different reasons, police, IM, IRF, special service.
Not all. So you're fully funding police and fire in option one, and $72,506 of IRF. So you've already shifted about $400,000, $500,000 of IRF to general fund in prior years. We're keeping that at the same minimal level that was there last year.
So if I can just add to address what Alderman Favor said at the last meeting, we still will fully fund police pension, fire pension, IRF. The question is how we fund it. So I think what Director Talkington is saying, under this option, police and fire pension funds are fully funded through the property tax levy and $72,000 for IRF, just to be clear.
Okay. Any other questions on option one? Okay, option two.
Well, option two is shifting a portion of that police and fire pension. So one, you're eliminating the $72,000 of the IRF from the property tax and shifting it to a different revenue in the general fund. And then two, a portion of police and fire pension funding at the level that you've requested will shift to the general fund other sources, and that's about $446,000 that will not be funded by tax levy for police and fire pensions.
And I would just add to what Director Talkington said, on option two, as staff, we thought this is what we heard, the clear direction from the council was to try to have an option on the property tax levy that residents would not see any increase to their levy. So that is what option two. If there's another option where we've not addressed that you want us to run that scenario, let us know. But we feel like, especially in option two, that was the majority, I think, of many of the comments that we heard from council.
And in both options, we're utilizing the seven point invest, the 7% investment rate.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Alderman Fanoukian.
I noticed in both of these options, the projected tax rate is higher than where we had talked about. I thought our intent, if I'm going to ask Alderman Jacobson to confirm, I thought our intent was to leave the property tax levy rate exactly the same, and then that way, when we levy for dollars, we'd only capture the new growth rather than impacting any homeowners. Correct?
So the rate that's shown in here is for all of the levies that are extended. So the prior rate that, the 1.2.
1.20211.
Right. Is only a portion of the levies. So like the library levy is excluded from that. There's a, it's, so on here, because I wanted to put it to the levies that the homeowner will see on their bill. The rate for all the levies that end up on a homeowner's bill, that's the rate, the 1.66. So in the second option, that rate remains the same, so there shouldn't be an impact on the homeowner in that option.
Okay. So I want to make sure that I'm clear on what you just said, so that the option two that shows 1.6629 is unchanged from last year.
Correct. For all the levies.
Combined.
Combined.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Fagan.
All right. You know, we've got the library fund levy in here, and we don't set the levy for the library. They set that, right? So have they gone up?
No, their levy is staying the same.
Okay.
As last year.
Okay. That's what I want to know.
Great. No, they've stayed the same.
The other one that did change, and we had talked about it earlier, but is also included in here, is the SSA for Greek Row. That was the one that changed dollar amount. The other SSAs remain the same as the prior year, but the Greek Row SSA went from $14,000 to $21,000.
Okay.
And that's included in here, so that staying at the same rate also absorbs that increase for the SSA.
And if you have any questions on the Greek Row SSA, I know our Public Works Director, Tim Holdman, can answer that. It turns out that the city was paying for a higher cost. We were not recouping or charging the full cost of the lighting to the property owners in that SSA. So by increasing the, the Greek Row SSA, the goal is just to have that cost borne by the property owners that are in that area. Director Holdman, is there anything else that I haven't covered that you would want to add to that item? Thank you.
So we had talked about 105.2%.
Correct.
So in option two, there's no 5.2%. It's the same dollar amount, or there's an increased dollar amount, but because of the increase in EAV, it should balance it out so that it's the same for a property owner.
So the 5.2%, when you do your truth and taxation.
Are we just saying that's going away because it's part of the debt number part?
No. So you do have an increase in the police and fire from last year, and it, it just doesn't absorb the full amount of the increase because we've changed the rate. I can't, I can't remember the, I looked this up and I wrote it down, and I forgot the percentage. So there is an increase in the police and fire. It's just the 5.2 when we put the truth and taxation notice out is on the overall levy with the abatements. And so there is some room within the levies to absorb a higher amount like the Greek Row SSA, but then that would reduce a different levy somewhere else. So essentially, I balanced the police and fire contributions and IRF, those three, to get to the same rate. So, so I kept the SSAs the same, I kept the libraries same, the one that fluctuated to get to the same rate.
Yes.
Where the police and fire and IRF levies.
Does that answer your question, Mike?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Because, because the way I always think about this is in dollars amount, because we levy for dollars. So the actual dollar amount, once you get rid of the auxiliary stuff, are we saying that in option, in both options, it's, in option one, it's a higher amount? Or is it the same amount and, you know, so the dollar amount, is the dollar amount increased or same?
The expenditures in both for police and fire stay. They increased from last year, but the amount going out of the general fund for police and fire and IRF stays the same. So the adjustment is what we can levy in the tax. And, hold on, I'm going to get that dollar amount for you in just a second.
While Director Talkington is looking that up, perhaps I could add, when you look at page five, in the middle of page five on option one, where it says potential impact of homeowner of $150,000 market value home in the box, therefore, the annual amount increase increases 5.9% over the prior year to fully fund police and fire pensions at the 7.0% investment return rate. If you look at then the following page, that's option one, on option two, once again, about the middle of the page, $0. So there's no increase or decrease. So, so to summarize for the audience, on option one, which is the FAC recommendation, it would amount to a 5.9% increase on the property tax bill for the police and fire pension funds. If you go with option two, there is no increase.
Alderman Noriko.
I recognize that it is politically unpopular to talk about tax increases. However, I feel a strong obligation to ensure that we meet our obligations in terms of the police and fire pension. And I am also reluctant to step back from IRF funding. Our policy, you know, states that we will fund it from the tax levy, and we're hardly doing that, so to totally eliminate that, it seems to me to send a wrong message. And while it may be a 5.9% increase, I think if you look at the potential impact on a homeowner with a $150,000 home, which I believe is above the average value of DeKalb homes, that $49 a year is less than a dollar a week. If I give up my, you know, McDonald's small senior coffee once during the week, you know, I could meet that. My point is that for a relatively small impact, we meet our obligation and send a powerful message. And so therefore, I would support option one.
You know, the increase now, if you'd like me to.
I beg your pardon.
The, the extended to extended, the increase, the percentage for option two is just the 5.2%, which is about $437,000 additional. In option one, extended to extended is 11.4% increase, and it's $956,000 from extended to extended. But both of these still fall under the truth and taxation cap, so you still are okay to choose the other option under that, that law.
Alderman Verbic.
That answered.
Is that answered? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. David, you're looking at me like you want to say something.
Do we have the upgrade, updated projections? Obviously, I'm using this sheet from last week that was at the seven and a half rate. Do we have those updated projections through 2022?
I don't, so I made the adjustments for the FY 18 column to give you the figures with this. I'm still working on adjusting the rest of it, so I don't have the full five years for you tonight.
Again, looking at what we're seeing and what was presented last week, well, I appreciate this year, we're looking at a, again, $50, dollar a week amount. When we're looking five years out and looking that it's going to be 50% higher, again, at what point do we have to put our foot down? The realization is that we can't afford what we're spending. The realization is we have a 2.5% external growth rate in the city, and we're, our internal growth rate is 8.5%. The reality is, it's a difficult conversation, but the reality is, either we need to talk about reducing headcount in police and fire, which is going to be a very difficult conversation, admittedly, or reducing salary. We can't continue to pay this, is the answer we're getting. And to look at a 50% tax increase over four or five years, that's not a viable solution. If every year, the answer is, well, let's just increase it a little more, at some point, these people aren't going to stay here and own homes here. And I think we're at that point, so. Well, I appreciate it, $50 this year, it doesn't look that large. That gets us through this year. What happens next year and the next four? That's the question we have to answer, and that's the, the reality of a structural issue with our budget. This year, we can come up with the cuts to make it through this year. It's, and having all these discussions, we can come up with it. We can find a million, a million and a half in cuts. I've already done it myself this week. It's doable. Structurally, as long as we're growing internally at 8.5% and growing externally at 2.5%, we have a major problem to deal with. And that's the real discussion we should be having.
Alderman Verbic.
Which leads to more of my comfort to say, let's work on finding efficiencies and cost savings and such, and graduate this, this expected return rate, because it's quite a swing to go from 7.5 to 7.0. We haven't really done any of the legwork where we could find those priorities and cost savings, but let's take a look, for example, perhaps at 7.4 this year, 7.3 the next, 7.2, as we're working on finding efficiencies and perhaps reorganizing operations at the city.
So you're looking at a whole different option.
Yes.
Mayor, if I can address just Alderman Verbic's comment, when we did meet with actuaries for the pensions, I asked that specific question of should we be looking at reducing those, the assumptions by 10th of a percent? So instead of going 7.5 to 7 and 1/4, 7, an actuary at the meeting said that general standard practice of what they see is municipalities moving in quarter percent increment. So if the council doesn't want to go all the way to 7, basically, what we heard from the actuaries to look at the quarter percent increment, and I asked your very question, and that was the answer I got from the actuary at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Favor.
So I, in option number two, or even in option number one, we're looking at the, the third table is talking about the effect on the general fund. And so if we were to go with option two, and if we could reduce expenditures by 5%, we would increase the fund balance to 30%. And I guess one of the, another way of looking at it that we've talked about in the past, and so not to say, you know, here's something else to do since our last meeting, but in general, the revenues year to year, I believe, have been decreasing. If that's not.
No, it's a slow growth.
Okay. So is that, we, does that the 2.5% revenue increase year, year over year?
That's a good average.
Okay.
I looked quickly, so I have plug numbers kind of in the five year for me to, for me to get to this. I haven't made all the adjustments fully in the five years, but I would say, in looking at reaching your 25% target, so it's a roughly $600,000 reduction in expenditures, and adjusting for the first option in the property tax levy, you're going to be between about, well, on here, I, I know I have a few adjustments on here, but it reduces the fund balance to about 22% in year five, so you've made some ground. And, and I've said this a few times, it's a cumulative deficit for in year five, so you didn't have to find $2 million to make ground for $2 million in year five, because that just keeps going, you know, it gets progressively worse. So if you correct part of the problem now.
It's a multiplier.
Then it won't, right, you're not going to reach it. So we're, by, you know, reducing the general fund to the 25% fund amounts, that's just the one I'm looking at right now, plus option one of the tax levy that you have here, you have kind of right, you know, you're right sizing that ship a little bit. So I think you would get, you would gain ground in year five, but I'm still working to kind of finalize these for you.
Alderman Jacobson.
In response to Alderman Verbic's comment, while I appreciate the discussion to go down gradually, the reality is that we, it's not that we have to find additional revenue there in that line item, it's a dedicated revenue source in terms of property taxes. So it's not like we're picking and pulling from something else to add to that number. The reality is, we have to get the pensions down, the, the amount of pensions down. We know what our return rate is, and again, I think seven is rosy. The reality is, the only way to reduce that number isn't to pull from another line item, it's to reduce headcount or reduce salary. Those are the only two answers that are within our control as a city to get that dedicated revenue source back into line with home values. And again, I appreciate the thought of doing it that way. Even going to a quarter, we'd be close this year, I'd imagine, but looking at the escalator going forward, as salaries increase, that multiplier shoots out much quicker than home values and EAV does. So the reality is, we have to deal with the two things we have in our control, and that's a long and very difficult conversation for us to have.
Alderman Verbic.
Because I really see long-term, that we need to work towards 6.5 is what, more of what I was getting at. So if it was more gradual, then I believe we could perhaps instill some planning strategies that could help us get there without harming our services.
Right. That's another way to go about it. You can grow the tax base, so by focusing on development, which the original proposed budget gave you was one of the key factors in here, you can build that tax base and help use that growth to cover the costs of rising expenditures based on the services you have today.
You know, what you said is right on, Mike, in the sense that, you know, we've got to take a look at this, and I don't necessarily want to go to an option three at 7.3%, you know. I, you know, I think we need to, as we look at approving first reading of any budget document, that we come up next Monday, less than a week, we need to do two things this evening. We need to look at the tax levy, whether or not we're going to follow the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendation, or whether we're going to do what we have heard time after time after time, and that is that folks in DeKalb do not want an increase in their personal property tax. So I think we have to send the message, folks, it's either option one or it's option two. And while we won't make any firm vote tonight, I think we have to at least have some consensus so that moving forward, when we look at a document next Monday night, correct me if I'm wrong, it has one of these options in it as part and parcel. And if in fact, we are going to go with the lower tax levy, putting a greater burden then on our general fund, we're going to have to have the discussion that Alderman Jacob, Jacobson refers to. Is that correct, Dave? So is there any? Alderman Favor.
Alderman, favor? I was going to ask for sort of a straw vote here.
So the straw vote, I am, I like option two.
Alderman Verbic?
I can also support option two, again, with the work that Alderman Jacobson mentioned.
I'm going to say option one, but when I indicated option one, that did not exclude or minimize discussion on the reductions and so forth. So, you know, I'm supportive of kind of taking a look at the proposals that have come forward on the budget reductions. I fully expect that there are compromise positions, which I had some ideas, I'm sure at least a few other people had some ideas. So I didn't see that, I don't see my saying option one as excluding everything else that has been discussed. But nevertheless, I'm still saying option one.
We couldn't do that. I mean, it's simply, we just could not do what you suggest that we might do if we all agree on, on option one, you know. Okay, Pat?
Option two.
Mike?
You don't have, we have to go in order, Bill. How do you feel?
I actually would prefer option two, along with the continuing discussions about, you know, where we might be able to cut some other things, realizing that option two does put more pressure on the general fund to make up the difference in the pensions.
Absolutely.
You know, I want to make very clear, not just everybody here, but anybody else who's listening, that we need to completely fund all the pension things. I want to stay that at the 7.0 anticipated rate of return because that's important to do that, otherwise we'll just fall further behind. But as Tony said last week, and there is just no appetite for any property tax increase at this time in this community.
Could I guess what option you are in favor of, David?
You'd be surprised.
Oh, how would I? Were you surprised before? Go ahead.
Again, being cognizant of our bond rating and understanding the bond rating, further going away from our financial policy is going to be another problem for us. And again, I appreciate that option one is probably the best overall financial option for the city. I think option number two is the best overall option for the taxpayer, and that's an interesting diverging needs at that point. Again, I would consider an option three if one were to be put on the table to reduce it down to seven and a quarter, that gets us halfway there, and then find internal cost cutting measures, which is going to, again, mean salary or headcount to make up for the difference so that we are fully funding what the anticipated contribution's going to be. It's going to require us to find $250,000 worth of pension, that's going to be a couple heads in each department somewhere that are either going to have to go to part-time or go to an outsourced mentality or go away altogether. I'd like to see us meet the full burden at seven and a quarter this year and push to 7.0 next year with that intention to eventually go to 6.5 in years forward. The reality is, we're going to have to make some difficult choices now, but it'll effectively meet our entire obligation doing it that way and protect the bond rating and protect the tax base.
But to your point, the 7.0 is going to protect our bond rating much, much better than the 7.2 or 7.3 or 7.4 or certainly 7.5. So what I hear is consensus. Mike, do you, I have an ask for you, I mean, we're going to have consensus whether, whatever...
Whatever, whatever I say, yeah. Well, personally, I don't like any tax increases. Option one, I think gives us a little more leeway for some other, other options as far as the rest of the budget, I think. And I might lean that way so that we have more options for the full budget and what we need to do with that. So that, as far as that goes, that would, I would lean that way so that we would have a better, better chance on that. But personally, I don't want to pay any more taxes.
There seems to be consensus and that option two is where we want to go forward.
Can I make one statement on the bond rating?
I beg your pardon?
One statement on the bond rating. Moody's was pretty specific, and I think they have, so while you're making great progress to go to the 7% investment return rate, there was a big emphasis on using a reliable, consistent funding source for your pension obligation. So some of the shift to less stable revenues is, would probably offset the change in the investment rate. So it's, just so you know that, that because pension obligations are such a, I would say, they're an obligation you have to pay and have very little control of being able to adjust it, that's why Moody's is more in favor of something like the property tax where you receive higher returns in that tax, than you do like the income tax where you're not quite sure what state's going to do tomorrow.
I understand. We can pick our poison, right?
Yes.
I guess that's why I would go for one, because it does give us more options otherwise. And we're doing a two, a twofer as far as the bond rating without actually a full increase on the property tax, because it's a little bit of a compromise.
That's true.
Yeah, the way I see it, the way I see it is if we go to a seven and a quarter, not only are we meeting our policy, which they want to see us doing, but we're fully funding, which they also want to see us doing. So while it's, again, that's a half a step in the right direction as opposed to one step in the right direction and one step back in the wrong direction. I just feel it leaves us in a better place. Yes, we are addressing it. Yes, we're making up for it. Yes, we're meeting financial policy, and yes, we're fully funding. Again, I think that's important to show them. I believe if I'm, if I'm in those, if that seat, looking at those numbers, to see that we are cognizant of it and addressing it and making progress goes a long way with me.
Alderman Noriko.
I firmly believe in compromises, and I think the seven and a quarter is a compromise position. Not ideal, but compromises aren't ideal, and, but I could certainly support that option. Whereas with only option one, I'm the lone voice in the wilderness.
If I recall, or at least it's the impression that I got when we came, when we had the presentation from Moody's, is they're not looking necessarily for, I'll say it another way. Moody's is looking for us to put much more burden increasing our rate of tax. So the amount that we collect in tax today and, and doing seven and a quarter and seven and a half, those are just, those are pennies. You're just throwing pennies. They would like to see us, you know, receive a much larger portion of our funding for the entire pension, not just the, the adjustment. They would love to see a much larger portion of that coming from the property tax. And until we structurally change the way that we do business, that's not going to happen, and we're not going to get a rating increase because of that. So talking about doing this and that tonight isn't going to improve our bond rating at all. That, that's the feeling that I have.
Right.
So it's pennies, we're throwing, we're throwing pennies in a well. It's not, it's not going to make a difference in our bond.
You're still firmly in option two.
I, I could support the seven and a quarter. I don't know why we would. When we've asked for 7.0 twice in the different meetings that we've had, I think it was recommended to go to 7.0, why wouldn't we? So we've got a much more difficult conversation to talk about next.
Absolutely. This is one component piece of what we've got to do tonight. We need to give some direction into what kind of a document we want as it relates to the tax levy for Monday night. So I'm not an auctioneer, I never have been, but is it seven or seven, excuse me, seven or seven and a quarter?
Seven.
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 Either way. You'd get my yes thrown out either. Okay. There is consensus that it's seven.
Thank you, Mayor, and the only thing I would add is, if we have an opportunity to go back and revisit the agenda item, I think the agenda item has been prepared, basically what you see before you, because we, our goal is always to provide you options. We can also add the seven and a quarter just so that you can see the numbers, even though knowing where the consensus of the council is going. So our goal is, we will get the agenda out tomorrow because of the Thanksgiving holiday, because we are closed Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving.
So option two with the 7.0. Yes, Tony?
And can I just ask, because I don't, it's not clear to, I could do the calculation, but in the, in the box, you've got, you know, if we reduce expenditures two and a half percent, five percent, but this one, we don't know the percent to get to the 25% minimum funding. Is that one and a quarter, one?
It's a little under 2%, I think.
Okay. Is that for both?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
In most cases, it'll be right around there. It'll vary a little.
Thank you.
So I think we've sent a clear message to the residents of this community. No more increase, no increase in your property tax.
This year at least.
This year.
That's right.
We're going to do our best to reduce our expected investment returns on our pensions, which will enable us to, while we're still kicking that can down the road, we're kicking it a little bit less vigorously. Is that a fair assessment of what we've done, Alderman Jacobson?
Again, to do what we need to do, the direction has to be to change how we look at budgeting, and I think we're doing that this year, especially in this category now. Forever, it's been, well, this is what we need to pay and this is what the residents then need to pay. We come up with our burden and then push it off to them. The reality is, this is what the residents can pay. We have to make do and get our numbers within that ceiling at this point. And I think that's got to be a cognizant message, not just this year for this budget cycle, but that's the reality going forward. If our pension increases are going to increase, then somewhere, someone's got to give, and it's not going to be the taxpayer anymore. They've already given enough.
Well, that coupled with the fact that we, as a city, staff, FAC, city council, are going to start this procedure much earlier. We're going to start 2019 in January. We're going to start that discussion so that we're not here at the witching hour, the bewitching hour to, to do this. I'm not suggesting in any way, shape, or form that we haven't spent a lot of time in studying this and that we're up against the dub. However, we are in a situation where next year at this time, we don't want to be in a, in a rush mode, if you will. I'm not suggesting that we're necessarily there, but we're pretty darn close. Okay, so that's clear, staff, in terms of where we want to go with the property tax levy. Now let's go back to item B. This is the proposed annual budget, and this is one of the key components now as we go forward. Again, looking at that document that we're going to have first reading on, on Monday, this is one of those items that hopefully we're going to have quite a bit of discussion and quite a bit of understanding and, again, hopefully reach some kind of direction going forward.
What have we moving to? I'm sorry.
The proposed annual budget. Okay. We talked about the tax levy first, Dave, on the, we flip-flopped that before you got here. Not because you weren't here, but, okay. All right, Anne Marie, why don't you go with the proposed annual budget?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor. As I indicated last Thursday during the last special meeting, it was apparent that there was significant concern in regards to the budget and the city's finances, based on the direction that we received from council. The senior management team and I cleared our schedules last week in order to bring to you what we did Thursday night, which was the 5% in reduction. So that was a little bit, a little under $2 million worth in expenditure reductions. We've done the same thing this week. We met Thursday night, early this week, yesterday, we sat and we met to come up with two other scenarios which are coming to you on Monday night. So I know Alderman Jacobson had asked for the 5% reduction, Alderman Verbic had asked for the 2.5% reduction, so you will see that in your agenda packet for Monday's meeting, which will be going out tomorrow. You'll also see the other optional recommendation as far as the 25, maintaining the 25% fund balance. So all of these scenarios are reductions, it's just a matter of the severity of reductions. With 5%, you're looking at nearly $2 million. With, with a two and a half percent, you're under $1 million. And with the, achieving the 25% fund balance, you're under $600,000. So we will be reducing under all those scenarios, so you'll have that for your consideration on Monday. And I just have a couple other opening comments in relation to the budget. So what we are looking for from the council tonight is really feedback and direction on any other aspects of the budget that may not have been gone in depth in presentation with the council. One of the things in particular that we really haven't talked about, I know it was touched on when the finance advisory committee recommendations last week, in regards to the recommendation of how to fund the infrastructure. This was outgrowth of the asset management plan presentation back in August of streets, fleet, and how do we fund those moving forward? So what was included in the budget right now was a 1% sales tax increase, if it pleases the council, if you want to provide any direction on that tonight. That is one of the issues that we'd like to know, because if there is not an interest in that, that is, we'll change some of the revenue assumptions in the general fund budget and we'll make those additional modifications. And the other thing is, we've not really, only go back in time, in September, we had the TIF phase out meeting with the city council. At that meeting, the clear direction we got at that point were two items. Number one, the council wanted to get the FAC recommendation in regards to the inter-fund transfer from the TIF funds into the general fund. They provided that recommendation and review that Thursday night. So any feedback that you would have on that, because staff had prepared the budget prior to that recommendation, so in, in the long-term, five-year financial plan, you will see our recommendation is to step down and decrease the city's reliance on TIF in the general fund. FAC did not want that step down, so any direction you can provide in that would be greatly appreciated. And the other key recommendation or key next step in regards to TIF was, you also wanted the FAC to provide a recommendation on a new targeted TIF, so really a core central business district TIF in order to, use your words, kind of keep the momentum going of the redevelopment business opportunities that you're seeing in the downtown. They provided that positive recommendation in regards to that. What I'd recommend is I want to echo what the mayor said in relation to the fiscal year 19 budget. Our plan, Director Tockington and I, would be bringing an outline of a draft schedule very different from what you've seen in the past at the January 8th committee of the whole meeting to have the first discussion with you to see if this is meeting with your direction. The following week, I know we have our first meeting with the FAC of the year, and they want to focus on their initial discussion on the five-year financial plan of, are they looking for any difference in assumptions or municipalities that are comparables, that we can include that data in the next revised five-year financial plan? So if you think of, if you think of January, we would be bringing to you the schedule for the January 19 budget, so as soon as you adopt the 18 budget, we're starting on the 19 budget with you and FAC. The other thing to keep in mind is, I'm going to go back to TIF. So we've got some initial direction from council, but not really prioritization of how you want, where you want to see the TIF funding. So the other recommendation is, and at the very next committee of the whole after that, January 22nd, is to have a discussion of additional... a discussion of additional prioritization from the council on where you want to spend TIF funds. How do you want the remaining TIF funds used for the projects? And I defer to the mayor, if you do not think that's going to be possible within the regular confines of a TIF, we can, or a Committee of the Whole meeting, we could look at doing a separate Committee of the Whole meeting, but that is one area that we definitely need more direction. So, you'll see some items in the budget, but it's very basic. It's, because we're really looking for direction from you on what you want to prioritize in TIF. So, from our perspective, those are some of the key things that we're looking for. Any feedback or direction that you can provide. We have put together, once again, the agenda memo on the budget, because just for the audience, so everyone knows what's happening, the next steps. Monday, at the Committee of the Whole meeting at 5:00, will be the public hearing on the tax levy. Monday at 6:00 will be the public hearing on the budget at the city council meeting. Both readings of the first ordinance on the tax levy and the budget will be at the city council meeting on Monday. So, all this information is coming back to you. With the budget, right now, we will have three scenarios. Maintaining a balanced budget, maintaining the 25% fund balance, and with all these scenarios, I'll say Director Tockington will have the five-year financial forecast as what does that mean five years out. So, first scenario, balanced budget maintains 25% fund balance. Number two, balanced budget with 2.5% reductions, and what does that do to the fund balance five years out? And scenario three, balanced budget, 5% reductions, and what does that do five years out? So, we'll have all that information. We're looking for any direction or feedback that you want to provide to us this evening.
Alderman Verbic?
I'm interested in all of those scenarios, but what I'd also like to see is all of those without a sales tax increase. Or, if council would like to see it with a half a percent sales tax increase, just some options on what that looks like, but most importantly, what do those scenarios look like with zero sales tax increase?
And Alderman Verbic, we'd be happy to run those. What we may have to do initially is get the agenda memo out with the initial information and revise that on Monday. I'm very sensitive with the holiday and schedules that it may not be in the packet going out tomorrow, but we could run those on Monday and get those out to you if that would meet with your direction.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Alderman Fagan?
Yeah. I don't want to see a sales tax. We want to build up this community. But, for the sake of it, I mean, I wouldn't even look at half, maybe 25%, maybe 2550, just to look at it, but for...
A .25, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
25%. You'd be swimming in money.
Right. You're the one that wanted it. We'll say, we'll just do it all in one year, just the pensions. No, that's what I'm saying, just a .25, you know, I don't want to see it.
Alderman Norrico?
In looking at reductions, I would like to propose that for the social service agencies, I realize that eliminating funding for them was on the table, but propose, again, a phase-in if we're going to cut their funding, to cut it by half this year, to give them some warning. Also, I would not be unopposed to eliminating the funding for the Northwestern entities. That was a relatively small amount of, like, 5,500, but that was something that, you know, I would like to see if possible in the scenario.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I think that's probably what's amused me in looking at some of the projections and showing this general fund balance building up to a 30 or 31%. I don't think it's any of our intent to put that kind of money into savings. It's to shift revenues and shift resources. So, I find that thus far, I think it's important to realize that if we're cutting, it's not to cut to save, it's to cut to put it into infrastructure, to try to eliminate a 1% sales tax increase, and I think that's the goal, that we have to go into it. I would wholly agree with Kate yet again, in the strange universe we're living in, that I don't think we could, if we look at social services, even go to a half. I think that would be a lot for them and a shock for them. I think we should probably look at phasing several things out over time, being cognizant of the fact that they're going to have to go out and look for alternative revenue streams, and we should probably help them with that. And I think giving them as long as possible to do so is a good thing, to see if they're able to make up those revenues. In terms of the actual list of cuts we were presented, again, in looking at many of them, I think some of them certainly put in there to get to the 5% were a shock value. I mean, when I looked at it, some of them were surprising at how deep some of the cuts would have to go, even personally asking for the 5%. I think the exercise was valuable in looking at what soft costs there may still be in the budget, and I think we did identify several of those going forward. I have a list of 40 that I'm certainly not going to share tonight, but I do have, I've been working all week late until the night to get to that 40, and I'm in the million and a half mark now, which would make up for about a half a percent of that sales tax increase. Again, I think there's stuff we can do right this second now, knowing that we're heading into a budget approval, and then add several things to the list for next year. Expect an email from me tonight with the long list, and if you have any questions, I certainly will try to answer them. Again, some of them, in playing this game, it's very difficult for us as council, not understanding where all the funds are going to, and not understanding a line-by-line expenditure of what some of these items mean. I mean, it's easy to take scissors to a budget. It's very simple. Knowing what those impacts may be and knowing what those things are are difficult, and I think that's part of the conversation we'll have to have, but in having staff identify those cuts, I think there are some things that make sense without changing or affecting our operational capacities that will get us close, but may not get us all the way there.
Yeah. Alderman Fagan?
Anne Marie brought up about TIF, and someone brought it up to me. Why would we still have $385,000 for the steam building budget for 2018?
We can eliminate that.
I just kind of think that's dead.
You have to understand, the staff starts working on this budget months ago, and this was prior to the last public presentation that we had on steam, and it was, the intent was, at the TIF phase-out meeting, we thought we would be getting direction on which, or that was our ultimate goal, of getting direction of which projects that you want in or out, and whether steam is in or out, and that was not accomplished at that point. So, if the council wishes to pull it out until you have that meeting, pull it out.
We've got some big-time cherry-picking on our agenda, for sure. I would suspect, David, and I, let me ask you this. I'll ask you flat out. Is the steam proposal part of that list of 40?
It is not.
It is not?
Being that that was in TIF, and that's not a general fund revenue.
Right.
But it is something that we can direct those funds to something else.
Oh, I mean, it would stay in TIF.
Right.
Even if it came back to us and we said we're not interested, it still stays in TIF.
Right.
It only changes the TIF line item. It doesn't change...
But I, but I, my point...
It doesn't change the bottom.
No, but it's earmarked.
I agree with you.
Okay. That's long.
I agree with you, but in reality, they would have to bring that back to us, and the answer right now is no anyway, and it merely changes the TIF line item budget, which doesn't affect the general fund.
Right. And one more thing here, David bringing up about cuts or whatever, and, you know, last week, we got this employee count, and it's pretty much from what I'm going through and what estimated, what was projected that was wanted and brought it back down to actually where we're at in 2017, so there wouldn't be really that much of a difference of employee count. But if you, if you look at employee count, employee count looks good. I mean, it doesn't look bad at all. But, it's what's in this employee count, and I believe Alderman Jacobson referred to it as, you know, we've got a lot of, got a lot of big salaries in this employee count compared to what it was back in '08 and '09. So, giving us just these numbers, yeah, that looks good, but it's the salaries. Am I right?
Keep in mind that the FTEs provided for '18 were based on the 5% cuts.
Right.
So, in reality, we're still at a 235 total staff count in the original budget we received.
Right.
Yes.
That's my point. Yeah.
Yes.
That's true.
Mayor, if I could just...
Nice little fold-flip chart to bring all the way over. It's really nice how it works.
If I could just comment, so, just for the sake of Alderman Fagan and others, so, and this is all what I've heard is the history, and you can look at, if you look at, you know, where the city was, total FTEs in '07, 253.5, '08, '09, and then you can see 10 and 11 is when the reduction. So, you'll see multiple departments listed here, because at one point in time, as an example, engineering was a separate department, and then post-recession, when there was the reduction, there was a lot of consolidation. So, there were multiple different department heads, different positions at that point in time. The city consolidated. I'll use an example. Community Development Department existed prior to the recession. You'll see in fiscal year 11, Community Development Department then starts to show zero. What ended up happening is those staff members were pulled into the Public Works Department, so there was no Community Development Director at that point. When I started, one of my, the first direction I received from the council was financial stability, but the other conversation I had over the course of the first couple budgets was creating the foundation in order to be able to deal with the, with the size community that we have and be able to run it effectively and functionally. Not having a Community Development Department was identified very early on, and I brought that priority to the council. If you look at that first budget, fiscal year 15, it was called, I think, realigning resources, of having someone in place to be able to manage that function. So, you may talk about the department head positions, but we could go back and look at, we were pre-recession. The reality today is, if we didn't have that department, we would not be as successful as we are right now in economic development. It's that structure that has allowed us to be successful. So, we'd be happy to go back and analyze this however you see fit, but the structure is the structure to get it in place for a municipality our size to be able to deliver the services to the community.
Alderman Fagan?
So, I'll go with what the city manager had mentioned. Maybe we are, that's one thing I didn't see in the list of cuts, is I didn't see like a structural reorganization of the city government. It, you know, looking over the organizational chart, there's several, there's two or three departments that have a director, an assistant director, and then two or three employees. And, you know, maybe the structure and the way that we are set up is not, maybe we could improve that. Maybe that is, you know, some of the additional cuts that we're talking about, those salaries that are saved could potentially go to staff, other, you know, to hire on, you know, people, lower-level employees to be able to, you know, do the work. Typical management, you know, is, you don't want to have more than seven or eight employees under you, but we've got some people that have two employees under them. So, I'm not sure that our direct, our structure is efficient. So, another one is, what we're talking about next week in putting together the projections. If we could know what our assumptions are in revenue growth that we're projecting, EAV growth, because I don't think those are listed as part of the document when we look at...
It was your last page. So, if it wasn't noted in that sheet you got here.
That one?
If it wasn't noted, it didn't change from the first time, so what's in the book goes over that, and it's one of the later tabs in the document. But here, if I made changes to assumptions, it's on this page. So, you'll see it, and then I have it for each year.
Any other comments at this point?
Are we going to go through the...
Yes. What I was going to suggest, Alderman Fagan, is this. What I hear staff saying to us tonight is that we need to give some direction in terms of the sales tax proposal, the 1% sales tax increase recommended by the Finance Advisory Committee, even though they broke it down, what, 75, 25, to a couple of various arenas. You need some direction on the TIF step-down. Is that correct?
Yes.
You need some consensus or some feel on whether or not this council wants to move forward with the possibility of a new TIF. Is that a correct assumption? Do you need that tonight?
We don't necessarily need that tonight, unless you want to provide it. Quite frankly, based on the direction, the recommendation of the FAC and the general comments from council members of wanting to see the momentum continue in the downtown, it was our plan to bring a proposal to you at the December 11th meeting regarding a new TIF. And at that point, you can tell us thumbs up, thumbs down. Do you want to do this? Do you not want to do this? How do you want to handle it? But, we're moving forward on trying to accomplish and address your priorities of keeping that momentum in the TIF going.
Okay. And I appreciate that, but you don't need that new TIF decision tonight, or even on Monday.
Correct.
As part and parcel of the document. And then, the final point that I think we need to do is to have a further discussion, if so pleases the city council, to, on specific budget cuts that were presented to us, and then some direction on whether or not we want to go with the two and a half, or whether or not we want to go with the full five, or whether we don't want to go with anything at all. I don't think that probably is one of our options. Yeah. Mike?
Looking at the list, I'm just interested in smarter approaches, like the municipal ban, for example. It is true, I believe, that the Park District is now charging or selling liquor at the park for the concerts, so why don't we take some of the proceeds from those liquor sales and apply that to help fund the municipal ban? So, what I'm saying or suggesting is a partnership with the Park District to help alleviate the situation.
Alderman Van Nukken?
Just, Jerry, as we go into the last point, I certainly would love to go through this item by item of the proposed cuts and discuss each one, because as Kate mentioned earlier in terms of like social services, there's some things that we can discuss, make compromises on individual items to do that. So, I think if we go ahead and proceed with the mayor's direction and then finish up with this part tonight, I would hope that would give staff a pretty good handle on where we'd like to go.
And I would just add, just once again, to reiterate for the council and the community, with the holiday, the agenda items put together, so we won't be able to pivot from tonight's meeting for what is going out in tomorrow's packet. And in the packet would be balanced budget, 25% fund balance, 2.5% reduction, 5% reduction, but we can make that change after Monday's meeting leading up to the December 11th meeting.
Yeah, but I think that while we're here and we have some time this evening, it'd be a valuable use of our time rather than pushing it off till later.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to make a decision tonight, too, on the sales tax, whether, you know, don't you think? I mean, this, this, these are the 5% budget cuts, which I hear may, might be revised to 2.5%, but...
All right. I would, you know, I don't know that we need to make the final decision, but again, that needs to be part of the discussion on where we think we need to go. You know, Alderman Fagan suggested .25, Micah suggested .5. I think those are all valuable options for us to continue to look at, and I think that they've already indicated that we'll have some more in-depth analysis of that for next Monday. Monday.
Okay. Maybe I'm trying, maybe I am surmising that what we need to do in an expeditious, expedient manner is perhaps not as necessary, and I will concur with whatever the wishes the council are. Yeah, David?
I mean, the reality at this point is the data that they're going to be able to provide on Monday is not going to be where we need it to be. So I don't understand why we'd even have that discussion Monday at this point. Cognizant of the limited amount of council meetings, we're going to have to have another special meeting. To try to have it Monday with a whole bunch of information-
Right.
-that we're now changing on staff on the fly isn't staff, it's not fair to staff, and it's not fair to us as decision-makers to try to do this on the fly tonight, then not have the data in front of us Monday and make any real decisions. I, I just think that's bad practice in my mind, and I think we should give staff at least some time to compile what we decide tonight and what we agree on tonight, and give us some options, and give Molly at least more than three days to try to put something together that's talking about something, changing the entire budget document as they've created it over months. I think that's rather unfair to staff, and I think it's going to be a wasted effort on Monday that's going to be a long and drawn-out effort when we don't have the numbers in front of us.
Are you comfortable with Alderman Fanoukian's suggestion that we go through this checklist one by one, or at least department by department? That, are you comfortable with that?
I think that's-
Would that achieve?
I think it's an achievable effort tonight that we could get-
Would we be further ahead?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And would give staff some direction to give us the data we need to see to have discussions, like what is the total savings, and how does that go against a one or a half or a 25%, 25 basis point change? Just to throw those numbers in the air, again, is, it's easy to cut, but to not have an understanding of what those numbers look like, I think is going to put us into a detrimental situation where we're left with very few options but to pass the budget as we have it, and I don't want to get into that situation.
Yeah. Nor I don't think any of us do. Yeah, Mike?
Could I suggest that we visit the TIF transfer? Because that's kind of an easy one to get out of the way first off, and then it's gone. You know, we have direction. So FAC is saying that they want to continue the TIF transfer through the end of the TIFs. Is that what you said, and what I'm remembering?
Correct. So they would keep it in the general, supporting the general fund for the, essentially, five years left with TIF 1.
Okay. And part of the original five-year plan was 2018, the TIF transfer, and then after that, step-down.
Correct. So in 19, even if you choose not to phase it out, in 19, you're, you'll have your last year revenue on TIF 2, but, and then that one goes away, but TIF 1 is the other one that we had staged going down equal amounts for the next few years.
Okay. So do we want to step it down? Do we want to keep it? We don't have those numbers in there. Seven, eight, $810,000.
So the background behind staff's recommendation on stepping it down was to try to address the council's priority of having more money towards development in the downtown or towards capital projects. So you can either, for what the FAC is recommending, is they're saying no change, so keep moving that same amount of money into the general fund to support general operations. So it's philosophical. Do you want to keep that with status quo, or do you want to step it down? So every year we step it down, we're increasing the revenue that's staying in TIF for projects, for projects that you prioritize.
It is in the budget documents, but it's easier for me, I think, to tell you verbally what the step, the step-down is. So in FY '18, we kept the transfer into the general fund the same. So FY '19, it essentially eliminates the TIF 2 transfer, which is 100, a little over $113,000. And then we reduce the transfer from TIF 1 by about $120,000. So the total reduction to the general fund in FY '19 is 232,000, 232,820. So because TIF 2 went away essentially in that year, for FY '22, '21, and '22, the reduction in each year is $120,000, just short of that for each year. So the total reduction would be $592,000 over the life of those.
Right. And what did we decide the number post-TIF would be that would come in from our share?
Yeah, hold on, it's in here. What we were estimating, it would be about $786,000. Which is one of the adjustments I need to make on that five-year forecast, that's why you don't have it.
If we follow the-
And that weighs very big into the discussion, discussion of creating a new TIF.
Right. So it would, it would change if you create a new TIF.
And creating a new TIF-
Because it would reduce the amount that would come back to the general fund.
Significantly reduce that money that was supposed to come back to the general fund that we forced that hand into weaning off of that.
If we follow the FAC recommendation and not do the step-down in 2018, what, what kind of dollar amount is that?
For FY '18, this general fund budget would not be affected because we didn't start the phase-out in FY '18. The phase-out starts in FY '19, and that, and that year is about $233,000.
Alderman, Arico?
So if we approve the phase-out, then, or we recommend the phase-out, then in 2019, we have to come up with some way to make up that $232,000 that is not going into the general fund from the TIF?
So it's already been factored into the five-year forecast that we've been working on, but the caveat on that is that includes the sales tax increase, the portion that goes to the general fund. So there is, there might be some more adjusting that we can do if the sales tax increase is not included in the budget.
And what was the reason that the Finance Advisory Committee did not recommend the TIF phase-out?
It kind of goes hand-in-hand with their other recommendation to keep the funding for the streets in the TIF at a higher amount. So they were trying to, they wanted to keep funding there, and then they didn't want to wean the general fund off just yet. So they were kind of looking at the TIF as a whole and the priorities they had for the TIF. They wanted to do more for streets and fleet within that TIF, but also keep the general fund funded for now, and the, and then when the TIFs end is when we would lose that support in the general fund.
Okay.
Through that transfer.
So fundamentally, you can either decrease incrementally every year, or you just take a big leap at the end of, of TIF, and there's a big reduction.
Okay.
So it's your, it's a policy decision by the council.
But there isn't if the TIF expires, because we'd see that same revenue come back into the general fund, because we've already weaned off the TIF to the number we're going to see, correct?
Well, I think you would have kind of a, a second discussion there. So if, let's say there was no new TIF created, then you would bring in, what you had in the transfer would essentially be offset by what you would bring in in property tax value. If you go ahead and create a new TIF, it covers a portion of the properties that exist in the TIF. So you wouldn't get that full value. You would get some value brought back to the general fund. But then the discussion, I think, would be in that new TIF, do you restore transfers through the new TIF to the general fund, or do you, at that point in time, take the reduction in the general fund and find some way to absorb that revenue reduction in that year? So you have kind of multiple options depending which way you go.
So to build on what Director Tockington just said, if you know that we're going to be bringing a proposal to you December 11th for a new TIF, and we don't know what the direction of the council's going to be on the new TIF, whether you support that or not, it might be in the best interest not to make a policy decision tonight on the inter-fund transfer, because it's not going to affect fiscal year '18. It's really affecting fiscal year '19 and beyond. Wait to see what you're going to do on the new TIF and see what those implications are in relation to the new TIF on the inter-fund transfer and what you want to do.
Can we do that without impacting what we have, make a decision?
Right. So when you adopt the budget, you're adopting the FY '18 budget, so you're not actually adopting these changes. They're just a proposal for you to consider at this point.
The only impact it would have is if you have a preference now, is Director Tockington could change her assumptions on the five-year financial forecast, because right now she has the assumptions in there of weaning ourselves off of, of TIF, of a multi-year step-down. So that may be the thing that you want to identify, is do you have a preference on the assumption going into the five-year financial forecast when she runs it?
I think we can wait on that, though.
Again, TIF 2 is going to end anyway, so we're going to see an increase in revenues come back from TIF 2 no matter what, even if we have changed TIF 1, or re-Frankenstein TIF 1, however you want to call it. And in doing that and changing that area, we may see an incremental increase there as well, correct? I mean, the hope is to keep as many of the depressed properties that are at or below their original TIF value in the TIF. But those properties that are coming out likely wouldn't meet that definition, which would mean they've had an incremental raise, and therefore we should see a small piece of that incremental raise in the property tax levy.
Right. But you'll see in the-
Without having those numbers, it's impossible to make a decision.
Right. Until I make, until I can put the, you know, the direction you gave on the property tax levy and some other decisions that you guys will provide tonight and give direction on, all of that is really going to, you know, make those amounts fluctuate. So until we have kind of more direction here, I just didn't want to give you the five years because I'll give you something tonight, like we did the last time, and it's going to be significantly different based on your direction tonight. So if you want me to take the phase-out out of the five-year forecast, I can, because that essentially is adding more revenue back into the general fund. We can do that, or we leave the TIF in. So it's really kind of those discussions on how you would like to see some of those assumptions. Your direction will guide what I adjust in that five-year forecast.
Dave's point, notwithstanding that we are not going to be in a position on Monday to make some final decisions, we want to provide you with as much information that you tell us tonight that you need tonight as possible.
But the one caveat to the 27th meeting is that the two public hearings were already noticed in the newspapers, so the two public hearings would remain on the 27th, and then we'd have to look to adjust the first readings, and then how the second reading would go if that's what council would choose to do.
I'm saying we're probably going to have to fit a special meeting in to have at least consensus agreements to come back for a first and second read. We're going to have to add to the meeting.
On the budget, not on the tax levy.
Correct.
Right. The tax levy we can take care of on Monday night. Because I have consensus there. Yeah, Mike?
Well, I apologize. I thought that that was an easy one to get on and off.
Again, I think the easy one is whether or not we keep a million dollars in roads in TIF. That's a policy discussion that will lead to the second question of, do you want to change revenues in TIF going to general fund? That's the easy, that's the lower-hanging fruit. Does the council believe that we should keep a million from TIF going toward streets in the TIFs? That's the easy question.
And actually, that was the road funding was adjusted. So the TIF got, the two TIFs went down to a half a million, but we increased a million dollars in the motor fuel tax fund. So in total, and Director Holdman can correct me if I'm misremembering this wrong, but I think in total you now have $1.5 million for streets in this year versus the million you had when it was just solely funded in the TIF.
With the 1% tax increase.
Uh, no, it was prior to adding funding with the sales tax. We had already made adjustments to use motor fuel funding.
I think it would be beneficial for Director Holdman to jump in as far as what's the breakdown. I think our goal ultimately was to have more money going for streets. It was a difference in the funding source. Director Holdman?
So for 2018, our budget is 1.75 million. It includes 1 million in MFT. The, the excess MFT money was available because of some incorrect numbers that were being used previously, and so we did have a little bit of extra with that. Engineering had been using an incorrect number, so we felt like we wanted to, to use that MFT to kind of bridge the gap to possibly getting the 1%. So that's the 1 million in MFT. And then also with, consistent with the TIF phase-out, we reduced both TIF 1 and TIF 2 to .25 million. That's half of what is normal historically, what we've been doing. And then we also have Fund 50 at $250,000. So that's a total of 1.75 for fiscal year 2018. The difference in this, in 2018, is that 1.25 of that would not be geographically restricted to TIF 1 and TIF 2. And therefore, we can get after some of the things that have been left untouched, such as crack filling in our streets that are five to 10 years old. And that's going to be the emphasis of our 2018 program as we envision it at this time.
Can you do us a favor and have engineering find another couple hundred thousand in all of our accounts?
Okay. Are we fairly well satisfied then in the TIF step-down scenario that we're comfortable moving forward with discussion on the budget next Monday, and we may need to schedule another meeting? It appears that we will. Okay, do we want to dig now into the projected, excuse me? Go ahead. Projected budget cuts? We can do this by going through the document that we were given several days ago on the options of the budget. We can go one by one, or we could go, for example, I'm just going to use the first one as a example, Community Development. We show a, a budget cut of one full-time employee, two part-time employees, a total of $554,821. That is comprised of the various points that you see throughout the document. Bill, is, is, what is your pleasure?
I think that we would be best served if we went through it item by item, because we may want to make an adjustment one at, but we can at least-
That's fine.
...discuss why that, and, you know, let's just start out here with, you know, what the first one lists is the abatement and elimination. And it says $13,000, but let me ask a question. So this is, of course, to mow and clean up properties, but do we, are we not able to lean against the owners to recover those costs?
We do lean against the owners. This amount is when we have a property owner that is not taking care of their property and the city contracts with a vendor to come out and mow, but we have leaned properties.
Okay. So we, we may be able to recover that cost as it goes along?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, please.
If I can jump in on that briefly, the challenge is leaning the properties, just recording the lien, it's not until there'd be a change in ownership of the property that, that lien would actually return any funding to the city. So our average weed lien, the, the cost of services is around $50 plus the cost of recording the lien. There's not enough money there to make it worthwhile to pursue foreclosures on liens of that nature. So it's typically a couple-year delay before we see the funding back. Separately, if the property changes hands because of a foreclosure, which is often the case on these, the city may only see a partial or may see no recovery on the liens.
And many of these buildings are great title buildings that were abating anyway. The reality is some of them, the gas station at first in Hillcrest, we're never going to see money back for those. We're keeping it maintained to keep it from looking awful in that neighborhood in the second quarter.
Oh, the one on the northwest corner, yes.
The real evidence, we'll never see a penny on that one.
Yeah, but I know there's other situations where that, we've done mowing and that, that either, you know, it's a lien or just a billing, and then we hope to recover that way. So, you know, I don't- So, you know, I don't, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead, I'll let you...
I was just gonna say, I think it would be helpful as we go through these items to mention which are actual reductions to our existing budget? Or what are reductions to recommended additions? So there's a difference.
You mean you haven't checked that against the budget?
No, just to mention to everyone that, again, these are things that we talked about adding to this year's budget. So some of the reductions are just simply the reductions of what we talked about adding.
Can you address Alderman Verbic's question?
Sure, I think what I'm gonna do is as we go through each department, I'm gonna ask the department head to identify because they're most closely associated with it. So I'm gonna turn this over to our community development director, Joel Charlton, to identify what were the items that were recommended. This is probably the easiest way, what were the items recommended in the fiscal year 18 budget? And so then, if you want to circle those as we go through, and then anything that's not brought up is a current item in our fiscal year 17 budget.
Great.
Does that make sense, Alderman Verbic? Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Director Charlton?
Okay, so I'll just go down the list, beginning on the top of page 5. Abatement is the complete elimination of any abatement program. So that's, that was the line item that was listed last year, it was listed this year. It would be removed at the rate of $13,000. The administrative assistant reduction...
Well, it's, all right, let's stop right there, though. So then the question to council is, do we want to eliminate the abatement program? Do we want to let everything just go wild? And I'd be in favor of keeping the abatement program. I mean, that's, I think that's what we want to look for consensus item by item, rather than jumping right into the next one, Joel. So...
What was the budgeted amount for 17?
13, 13,000, same dollar amount, yes.
Yeah, these are all budgeted items, most of them, I tell you. We were asked to get a, that, is that a 5% figure?
Right, so the list you're looking at is to reach the 5% expenditure reductions in the general fund. So they're all budgeted in the proposed 18 budget. I think the difference that Alderman Verbic was looking for is, so abatement elimination is something that we provide as a current service. And then the following one, the administrative assistant reduction, this was part of a proposed increase in the FY18 budget. So that's the, I think, the difference that we were looking for in the...
Right, yes, that's perfect, thank you.
I think, so Director Charlton, if you can just go through, instead of item by item initially. Can you just identify which are the new items that are proposed in the 18 budget? Such as taking the administrative assistant, the one item called administrative assistant reduction, which is taking the part-timer to full-timer.
So only the new things?
Initially, yes.
I think, though, that'll take longer than if we just go through. Like, so like, if we decide right now we want to keep the abatement, we're done with that item rather than going back. So, I mean, my feeling is we need to keep that abatement if we're gonna, you know, as part of the community development because it makes the community look better. And so I'm asking the rest of council, is that consensus agreement or not?
Yes, it is.
I would say, though, my one caution here is in that you might go through and find that you want to keep more than what would reach your 2.5% target.
I understand that, at least we'll know that.
So in that case, some of these might be shifted in that scenario, but I just wanted to make sure.
But I think at least we need to start making some progress here.
Would it be comfortable with the council? Otherwise, we're going to be here until tomorrow morning if we go through this one by one. And I know our media guys, you certainly don't want to be here until tomorrow morning, do you? Yeah, right, but we'll, but what I'd like to do then is to suggest we go through these item by item with the department head. But then quickly, we get some consensus as to whether or not we want to remove that from the budget cut consideration or not. And I appreciate your comment, Molly, in that we may very well, if we approve taking those off the table, every one, we're going to, you know, impact the 2.5. So let's start with the abatement. Who's in favor of removing the, of keeping that in the budget? Is that what you're saying, Bill?
That's what I was referring to.
Taking it off of this list.
Correct.
Correct, off the cut list.
Are you favor, are you in favor of that?
I'm in favor of leaving it on.
Okay, Mike?
Alderman Jacobson had his hand up.
No, no, I want to go, well?
I just had a question, looking at the budget, in the budget, it only lists that expense as a $10,000 budgeted line item. So I'm confused as where the 13 is coming from. Just to update that number, I mean, we're showing it as a total cost savings of 13,000 when it's only budgeted as 10,000.
Yeah, Mike?
And for me, everything is still on the table, that hasn't changed. So, you know, I, I still take this list as, as advice from staff in addition to the rest of the materials that we'll receive. And to me, that, that will then be part of when I would be ready to make these kinds of decisions.
So you're in favor of leaving everything as it is?
For the moment, that's correct.
What about you, Kate? Bill would like to keep that?
No, you can leave it as a reduction.
Leave it as a reduction. Pat?
Keep it.
Keep it, okay. Mike?
What am I saying?
Yeah, we're gonna be here, Jill.
I don't, I don't want to cut it, we need to keep it, keep it as an expense. Whichever way that is taken.
Kate, do you have any opinion on whether you got it?
I think we should keep it, I think it's gotta be, we have to look at some reductions across the board on some of these line items. I'd like to see like a 20, 20% decrease in the budgeted amount.
So, thanks, Sarifah, you want to keep it on the list or you want to keep the service?
I want to keep the service.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what impact it makes, especially...
So you can remove that as a budget cut?
Can we just have a set of terminology moving forward? If you say keep, that would be, it stays in the budget. If you say reduce, you are basically agreeing with the reduction. So keep or reduce, or something else, but just so we're consistent in terminology.
Joel Ellen, next one.
The next item is the, was a new item added to the agenda. And it was to increase a currently part-time position to a full-time position. I described this in our presentation. This is Natalie's position in community development, who serves Jason and Dan and I, who share her services. And she's here 28 hours a week and working on agendas and minutes and other things that we really don't have the ability to help her or have her help us with our administrative functions to be able to better perform our duties. What this means is that when we're in meetings and people are calling to the city for services or requests that we can't oftentimes get back to them in a timely fashion. We can't put together some of the files for the data that we need because, you know, we just don't have time to make those things. So she's been here for a long time. She has an extensive knowledge of the code and can oftentimes answer many of the questions and thereby not result in a need for us to call back some of these people. She provides the primary source of our FOIA information request. So again, this is just something that she is uniquely qualified to do in this position. Another part-time position doesn't really help out because the learning curve is, is really too great. So this was something that we recommended based on her knowledge and her specific skill set to better help the three administrative, or the three executive people in the department who focus on economic development be more focused on that function and not spend so much time performing administrative tasks.
So if I could make a suggestion moving forward with the number of items, when we go through, I just ask the department head, give a, since we already went more in depth on it last week. Just very brief overview so the council can give us direction.
Mike is comfortable with that reduction, how about you, Tony?
Reduce. Reduce?
Comfortable with the reduction?
Yep.
Okay. Kate?
Yes, to the reduction.
Reduction. I defer.
Reduction.
Strange that I'm saying no. Again, I think that there is some efficiencies there that could have another part-timer there at a $20,000 or $21,000 cost savings. If we're going to shift the focus to economic development, it's pretty clear they have, they're pretty top-heavy there. And they do need some clerical, from what we've been told. I would agree to a part-timer to answer the phones and do some of the clerical stuff to free Natalie up for some more technical stuff. To free management up for the real work we need to get done to justify their salaries. But I would support the reduction as well. Again, I think if they need someone, then hire a thousand-hour-a-year person at 20 bucks an hour. And we still see a $20,000 cost savings over the original proposal.
That may be the area for one of those interns that is projected to be cut later on. So, because, to me, and, you know, I, I'm not voting here. I would not concur with the majority of the council in this one, only because I feel that community development is one arena that we need to stay focused on. And we, if we've had some successes, and we've had a number in this community, community development, we've seen that. And I'd hate to take a step backward, but I will concur. I will note that the majority of the council members feel that that is a legitimate reduction. Okay, Carrie?
Yeah. Can I just say one thing, and I gotta get it off my chest, and then we can continue with this? Because right now I want to just beat my head against the wall. To a certain extent, I feel that we should tell staff and management a projected cut that came with the 5%, that came with the 2.5%. And if we want to say 2%, and say, okay, you make it work.
Yeah.
Here's the amount of expenditure, you know, we want this cut. You are the people that are doing the job in the trenches. If you can make it work on this dollar amount, and so you need the people here and there, then let's go with that. And then that's kind of the policy and you set it. Now, if the rest of you want to go through and micromanage all this, because, and each one of these, I'll sit here and do that. But you gotta know that half of my brain is someplace else. Because that's what we do pay them to do. And they came up with the 5% cuts, which I think are too much. But if we can balance it at a dollar amount, that kind of makes sense and they can do it. And here's our dollars, and we don't have a sales tax increase, and here's our dollars, I think we're ahead in the game. Okay, I got it off my chest.
Alderman, Alderman Orego.
I concur. That's all I'm gonna say. I'm trying to be a person of few words.
Alderman Verbic.
Same, I would prefer not to go line by line. I think that, again, perfect what Alderman Markport referred to. We have given that direction.
Alderman, favor?
I'm fine with that for this evening. But, you know, as Alderman Fanuken, I think a few others have mentioned, there's a few projects on here that are listed as cuts that, you know, I think are worth a lot more than the dollar amount that we're cutting. So the social services, we've already talked about that, that I wouldn't agree necessarily to cut them completely. So that's where I would get into a little micromanaging. The Annie Glynn North plan, I would keep that. As was already discussed, the municipal band, we could work something out with the Park District. And IHSA funding, I would keep that because it's a huge economic boom. Those are the five, everything else, leave them on the table.
Well, that's, that's a unique approach. You had your wishlist, you just said what your wish...
My backyard, those are in my backyard.
Now, and what I also see here is that the staff is coming up with a 2.5% proposal on Monday, which is going to impact some of these numbers. Yeah, Bill, Alderman Fanuken?
Some of these, though, were policy decisions. You know, like the Annie Glynn North, that's a policy decision, that's just not a dollar decision, that's a policy. And same, some of the other things that Alderman Favor mentioned, that some of these items, some of these items are policies that we need to talk about. Not just leave it to staff to decide. I mean, that's my feeling on it, and that's why I wanted to go through here item by item and talk about it.
If I could address all the concerns, I think what you're gonna see Monday is many of your concerns addressed when it comes to the 2.5%. So we tried to pull out and have only the 2.5% reductions really focused on staff and operating costs. Because we knew that there was a certain dollar amount that we wanted to achieve on operational costs in order to increase the general fund balance in the outgoing years. So you will see Annie Glynn North and Director Tockington, correct me if I'm wrong, all those items you've talked about, Alderman Favor. The social services outside of, I think, the $5,500 for Northwestern. Because we have heard from a number of you, if not all of you, in regards to your displeasure not getting the most recent reports on a regular basis from Northwestern. So we carved out that $5,500, and then you have that $1,445. So we tried to look at what are the external items affecting the community? Which is the social services municipal band, Annie Glynn North, and put those back in. I think in what you'll see Monday, IHSA, I think we looked at, we took a multi-year approach to that, to the funding. But any of those, that can be changed. But we were very sensitive to those items that had the community impact. And put, our goal was to have those in and not be part of a list of reductions for the 2.5% reductions.
And the IHSA isn't even, shouldn't even be a budgeted item for 2018, it should be 2019.
Yes, but what we...
They're not back again.
It's a $25,000, and we split it over...
Is it a 25?
It's a $25,000 budgeted, 12 and a half a year.
Pardon?
You know, by the way, thank you very much. I'd like to see that, I concur with everyone else, going with it, looking at it for the dollar amount. I understand Bill's concern about policy. But I think city management would find that they probably want to leave the policy there, we can always discuss it. The other item is what they've decided on taking in or out. We can always change it. And budget. So if there's something that Alderman Favor wants, that's in his backyard, that maybe something in my backyard that I've got that was taken away from you, we can discuss that later. But at least we, we're going, I mean, we, we're looking for a dollar amount. And then we can backtrack. But as Mike said, you know, let them do their job, let them come along, and then, then we'll look at it after that. But we're looking for the dollar amount now, we're talking about a budget. And we're just talking about dollars and cents right now.
And if I could also say, Director Tockington just showed me, I made an incorrect statement. So right now, the Annie Glynn North was part of the 2.5% reduction, so that will be in your agenda packet. But if you say you want that in, we would look at reducing somewhere else. So it was my mistake. And I just, actually, one other thing I want to point out, the reason that was in there is because of what we have heard directly from task force members either that have vocalized or via email of their feeling that some of their preference to take this over. So we only put it in there based on some of those comments that we heard. It's a policy decision of the council as to what you want to do and whether you want to continue the contract with Camero's.
Yeah, Alderman Jacobson?
Again, what's frustrating to me in going through this, and I, there's no way we can do this line item by line item here. It'll take us two months to get through this entire package. We're through number two at this point. In looking at a lot of them, again, while I appreciate that it was me that set the 5%, I wanted to see what we felt we could cut and what we could live without. In reality, do I think that all of those things, just to get to that number, are legitimate? No, do I realize the staff cuts would be so severe in some departments, they'd be crippling. Do I realize the staff cuts would be so severe in some departments, they'd be crippling? Absolutely. And I think, again, a lot of these are gonna have to be policy decisions going forward. Do, I mean, how do we offer the same service to the resident for a better value? Has to be the question that we come up with. I mean, I've done them line item by line item. I mean, I have all of them listed in and spent that time late at night, one night last week, and I was, it was very difficult in some of them to say, "Yeah, let's outright cut something. Let's say no." I tried to compromise, at least with my whack at it, in saying, you know, "Let's start to wean some of these things off. Let's start to look," especially with things like the downtown snow removal and the downtown decoration reductions. Do I think those should go away? No. Do I think the business owners down there should pay for it through an SSA? Absolutely. That is a special service they're getting, and they should pay for that service, and it makes sense for us to aggregate it and contract it out. Again, in terms of budget number, can we make that budget number of $80,000 go away? Absolutely, out of our budget, but we should keep the service. And again, I think that's, there are a ton of policy decisions in terms of some of the things we have to look at here. And I think the reality is, you also have to weigh it in with what staff has presented to us. Again, when you look at things like, "Let's get rid of all interns that cost us $5,000 apiece." When we can get rid of one part-timer to cover five other people's wage to get work done here. When you're looking at, should you get rid of all these things or get rid of one member of the management staff to cover $150,000 or $200,000 worth of these items? Again, those are policy decisions that I'm not entirely sure how to facilitate amongst us. While I appreciate the fact going line by line is difficult right now. Again, on the other side, I, we have to be engaged in the processes now, knowing where the cuts can be, what is important to us, what we think the best plan is, and whether we wanna do that here or more aggregated from individual comments and have staff aggregate them and take a look on paper of what we all think of them. I, again, some of these are, as Bill mentioned, policy decisions. Do we believe we should push out the crossing guards right now? That's a policy decision. Do we wanna cut that $50,000 line item, understanding that the district may not be able to pick it up in January and we may not have any crossing guards for six months of the end of the year? That's a tough one. Again, those are discussions individually in policy that somewhere, somehow, we have to have a discussion about.
And if I could address Alderman Jacobson's comment, two things. First of all, and I think Alderman Verbe had said this earlier, what we'll do with the memo, and when you see this revised chart, we'll color code so it's easy for you to identify anything that was a new budgetary item, so that you're able to see between what was new versus what is constant that's been in the budget. And then, just specifically on the intern, when we looked at removing those intern positions, you're absolutely right. I mean, when you look at the dollar amount, the reality is, in order to be effective, you need supervisors who are gonna dedicate the time. And currently, with the structure of our organization, we've had that commitment and we've made that commitment to the interns. But any change in structuring has to take into consideration, then the staff member has to have the appropriate time to mentor that intern. And our feeling is, if, with what we provided here, which was a collaborative effort of the entire senior management team, of knowing if you do one thing, what's the impact on the other, because they're all integrated, sorry, I can't talk. Our focus was on the core services, is what's the mission of the city. So, we looked at knowing that police and fire is 65% of the budget. So, in order to make the 5% reduction, the reality is, the remaining departments, including Public Works, took a big portion of that brunt. So, if our goal then is to look at what is the core service each department is going to focus on, then we're, as staff, taking away some of those responsibilities, and if we're gonna focus on those things, we may not have the time to manage appropriately. And I've seen in other organizations that will have interns that don't appropriately manage them, and it's not, it's not fair to the interns. So, when we looked at these, it wasn't, "Let's get to the total." It's, if we're gonna redirect our resources, then what is that employee that is currently supervising the intern, what are they doing with their time moving forward? And if we're going to reduce, and if we're ending up moving responsibilities around from different people, they may not have the time to be able to supervise those functions. Believe me, I've had the opportunity of working in organizations that have interns, and we have a number of them in different capacities, both undergraduate, graduate, interns we pay, volunteer interns, and it is a benefit to both the organization and to the intern, but you have to have time to commit to it. So, when we've looked at this, we've looked at, "All right, you want us to focus on certain things, then we may not have the time to be able to manage some of those resources." We'd like to, but that was the discussion that we had at the executive team.
It appears to me here that we're dealing with minutia, and I think we ought to address the whole question of what Alderman Favor initially talked about earlier this evening, and that is, I think we have to take a look at the whole structure of our government. You know, that's where we need to be. And so, what I'd like to suggest, in deference to Alderman Fanucan, my Alderman, is that we, instead of going through this, Bill, point by point by point, that we see what staff has come up with, with the 2.5% reductions, because it's apparent, you've already listened to somebody, to somewhere, by taking out the band reduction, by taking out the Annie Glynn North reduction. I mean, that's already happened. I'd like to see the document on Monday, and even though we may not be able to fully make a decision on Monday night, at least we'll be closer perhaps then, than we are tonight. Yeah, Bill?
Well, it's just that I would be disappointed to abdicate our policymaking decision completely to staff.
Yeah.
I mean, there are some items in here that we should discuss whether or not they should be included. As Anne Marie's already indicated, Annie Glynn North numbers are not, are still cut in the 2.5%. And yet, I think that's a piece of the puzzle should stay in, because of how important that portion is to solving some of the crime portion that we're dealing with. And so, those are the kind of things that I really would like to continue to have discussions about, and there's other things. You know, we mentioned the municipal band. You know, they've now formed a not-for-profit, so maybe we can wean some of the support away from them instead of the full $60,000. Those are decisions that councils should be making and not advocating to staff.
Good. I like that stance. Would it be appropriate for each of us to take a look at all of these staff-recommended reductions and pull out those items which we think deal more with policy and deal with items that we, as a city council, ought to be addressing individually? Because that's what I hear you saying, Bill.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying, is that there are some items, and I'll just say, you know, Dave mentioned the crossing guards, you know, that's a one-time expense, because if I'm correct, as of July 1, that goes away permanently anyway. So, those are just some of the things that, you know, we don't wanna blur the lines on, but there are some things here. So, that's my point.
Point well taken. How do we accomplish that and move this forward with each and every city council, each and every city councilman making a determination on whether or not that ought to be a policy arena that we should devote more discussion to?
Mayor, what I would suggest or recommend is then, have council members right now, just as Alderman Favor did, list out your hot-button issues, of what do you absolutely wanna see in there that you would not want see cut? So, we've heard Alderman Favor, we've heard Alderman Fanucan in regards to the Annie Glynn North revitalization plan. Are there other items that you absolutely do not want pulled out?
I'm gonna make a different suggestion, only for the sake of time. I'm gonna look down toward our IT director back there. I'm certain there are several free and very easy-to-use survey apps out there and survey programs that we could use in the open-source arena. Can you put this together as a survey for us to run through and have the options of either leave it, keep it, or policy discussion, so we can aggregate it all together and have an answer Monday of what the group thinks, rather than going through every individual item? We'll have a printout of, "This is what the survey says, and this is what we think are important, and this is what we think should be left in, and this is what we think should go out," and then it's done. It could take us a few minutes to do it that way.
Is that legal?
Again, being that we wouldn't be discussing with one another? Absolutely, it would be legal. It wouldn't violate.
That was my only concern, was open meetings act, but I would have to defer to legal for that.
Again, if it was aggregated by staff and then presented to us as a document in an open meeting, it wouldn't violate an open meetings act.
Yeah, I agree, provided that the survey is set up that you're all just completing your own individual survey and seeing live results from other members of council.
Of course.
I think it also may be the case that some of the issues are more narrowly focused when council looks at some of the revisions that have been made, based on the feedback that has been received from the council and FAC to date. It may be a narrower discussion once you see some of those different options.
The other thing I would add, and you know, I would look towards Director Thorson to say whether there's an open-source solution, like you brought up, Alderman Jacobson. If there's not, we could go old school. We'll send you out a fresh copy of this memo and you mark it up, yes or no, you know, and then define what that is, and then we tally the results.
So, there are definitely options. However, the only caveat I have to it is working with legal to make sure that we're not violating OMA in any way, shape, or form. So, I can discuss with the city manager, Gora, to come to a final conclusion on that and make a recommendation.
Pat, did you have something?
No.
Mayor, I just wanna say that there could be a different option on here, too, that if we did the survey, that I would add that on some of these, like, let's use abatement, because we did speak about it, instead of elimination, because that's what's on the 5% list, there could be the possibility, maybe you only wanna eliminate $5,000 of it and you keep some level of it. So, I think I would add an option on there if you feel there's some comfort to do part of it, but not all of it.
Keep partial reduction, full reduction, policy discussion, and then comments.
You know, I hate to play a little school bit, I think Anne Marie's right. If we went over and we just made a copy of what was sent to us, or if you wanna send that out, and then that'll alleviate, you know, partial, you know, if it's $10,000, you can put down $2,5,700. And, you know, there's only seven, eight of us that they have to go through. I think it'd be easy to get it done with, simplify it.
The old-school method would be the quickest, because we could send out the memo tonight and then you can hand-write it, drop it off in the box. We're not gonna be able to compile the results till Monday.
It creates an additional burden on staff to then compile it all, and in building the form that would take 10 minutes, because you have all this information, you set up a template and drop all the questions into it, I think it would be significantly more cost-effective, both for us and for staff, to have it auto-aggregate and have that all taken care of.
What I hear Mark Thorson, our IT director, saying is that perhaps, given the closed time parameters we have here, what with Thanksgiving week, et cetera, and we want this information next Monday, that it may be more time-consuming for staff at this point to do it that way as opposed to do it as Pat suggests.
Well, I would add that. Online might be good. It might be more of an issue of whether or not I can learn, some of these might be easy to do it quickly. But if I send this stuff to you in an Excel document and you guys don't change kind of the columns and rows, then it'll be easy for me to use some of the advanced tools of Excel, like the pivot tables, to aggregate the information. But the caveat is, you cannot change the rows and the columns. You'll have to leave it in the same way you got it. Just add the information in those columns.
Or if you have a template, it would kick you out of CSV form that printed it exactly as you wanted it.
Well, this way.
I do surveys at the fraternity like this all the time, and it takes 20, 25 minutes to build the template and have the answer.
I love, I love surveys, like the survey monkeys and all that, absolutely. I agree. I just wanna make sure that we walk out of here tonight with staff comfortable, that we're gonna be able to get that document and that vehicle and that mechanism in place so that we can do what we wanted, what we wanna do tonight. Mike?
I was just going to ask, I was just going to ask Alderman Jacobson if he was volunteering to help with that effort.
I mean, yeah, if that's what it comes down to, I can come in for 20 minutes and get it done.
Everybody comfortable with the survey tool? So, we don't know what that survey tool is necessarily gonna be, but we're going to receive, will we be receiving something then tomorrow?
Yes.
Further discussion on the budget?
I was just asking a question. Where did we end on the sales tax? Are we, was the direction a quarter and a half, or what was the direction?
There was no direction on the sales tax yet.
There has been no direction given on the sales tax.
I was under the impression that we were gonna get options on quarter, half, 1%, what the impact would be. That's what I thought we were gonna get, correct?
Okay.
Yes, I heard that from two different council members, so I can do that.
Is there consensus that we'd like to see some options given in terms of the sales tax? And that would be 1%, 1/2%, and 1/4 of a percent?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay. Alderman Noriko.
I have a question. Where does that additional proposed gasoline tax come in?
So, right now, the locomotor fuel tax was not increased in this budget. So, it was an option in the five-year forecast. It's one of the revenue sources you could look to. And then, Alderman Fanucan had asked for additional information on it. So, that's where you received that, in that last packet.
Kate, if I may, I think the, if we were to raise it 1 cent, it would mean about $180,000. So, I mean, that is something that we could discuss Monday night. But you have to remember, what the lockbox meant that the state has in the Constitution now, that would have to be devoted to some form of transportation, whether it be the airport or road repairs.
Alderman Favor.
On the, on the sales tax, your direction was 1/2 or 1/4. I would like to see, you know, 0 as well. I don't wanna, I don't wanna bake in that we're gonna approve the sales tax. Right. I would, so if we're just taking straw polls, I would prefer not to have 0 sales tax at all. I could potentially support a 1/4% sales tax that was specifically earmarked for police officers, strictly for that purpose, but prefer 0.
Right. And that's, I just asked for the quarter, because Mike had asked for 1.5, and it's like, but like I said, I prefer.
Right, I don't wanna bake in that there's a tax increase.
Right. Same, right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here on council? I wanna make sure that we have some comfort with that 1/4 of a percent, Tony, even with the caveat of how it's expended on the sales tax. Is there anyone here who feels that a sales tax increase of more than 1/4 of a percent is something that's palatable and something that you would support?
I am in such a weird position. How did I become the moderator? Yes, I would like to see all of them, just to see where we are. Get Streets and Fleet have to be part of the discussion, whether it's coming from sales tax or it's coming from somewhere else. We need to see what those needs look like and what those numbers look like. And if the answer is no, then we have to then, again, our cuts will need to go up significantly to try to find the revenue to generate Streets and Fleet's money. So, at this point, we're on a teeter-totter and we have to figure out where the money's gonna come from.
So, we're a little bit softer on the sales tax increase proposal as opposed to property tax increase. Is that a fair assessment or not?
Yes, that is a fair assessment. But I wanna remind you that in the five-year kind of forecast that you're going in, that does not include the full 1%, because the Streets and Fleet are in a different fund.
Streets and Fleet are in a different fund. So I don't have a five-year forecast for those funds, but I can show the various amounts of the sales tax and how that would affect each fund for FY, beginning FY '18 and then the annual amount. Because remember FY '18 is only three months of revenue.
And I take it that the FAC recommendation that we have the full 1% sales tax was based on them wanting to see better numbers on that five-year forecast?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question. So they.
Okay, let me just ask. What was the rationale of the Finance Advisory Committee in instituting a full 1% sales tax?
Okay. It was they wanted to get as much funding to Streets and Fleet, really more heavily for Streets. So their recommendation varies from what you have in the budget. So in the budget, the 1% was split 45% for Streets, 25 for Fleet, and 30% for the general fund, which really went for police services and the multi-year staffing plan for police. What the FAC recommended was not that structure. They wanted 3/4 of the sales tax to go specifically to those Streets and Fleet capital. And then with a six-year sunset or they had to put sunset or check in with council on that. And the quarter percent was to fund three police officers only with the benefits that were outlined in your budget. But the remaining funding, funding approximately about 300,000 would then be transferred and go to Streets and Fleet as well. So theirs was a little different in that there was less of the funding going to the general fund.
So are you fairly clear in terms of what we're going to see on Monday night as it relates to the sales tax?
Well, I think it would be helpful if, because right now in all the five-year forecasts, it's the sales taxes included in that general fund five-year forecast as the sales tax was proposed in the FY '18 budget document. If you would like to see the sales tax shown in the way the FAC recommended, I can do that. I just think I'd rather have direction on, do you want to keep the sales tax as it was proposed and see the different options from 1/2, 1/4, and then taking it all out? Or do you want to see those options the way the FAC proposed? It'll, it'll change how the general fund looks.
Or some other methodology. Do you want it totally out?
Alderman Fagan?
I think general consensus is totally out and then what the 2 and 1/2% and the 5% would be. I think that's pretty much what we're looking at, right?
Well, I think though, Pat, you misunderstood the question. We're only talking about the proposed sales tax increase. And I think earlier consensus discussion was to show it what the income would be at 1, 1/2, 1/4, and no percent increase. And I think that's what Molly's asking now. And then how would we like that broken down? And FAC recommended one way in terms of whatever increase there would be going to fleets and streets and to general fund. So I think that's what, where you're talking about the cuts more than the sales tax.
Right.
Okay.
Alderman.
So if, if you're, so I will, the way I would like to see it is that we're not using the sales tax to fund operations that we're using it for capital or for the police only. So not to fund operations. That's the way I would like to see it. And I believe that's the way the FAC recommended. That's where I'm at.
Everyone comfortable with that?
Again, I don't feel comfortable using it for operations at all. If, if I'm going to go ahead and support a sales, sales tax increase, which I could probably wrap my mind around surprisingly, it would be for infrastructure.
Right.
It would be a dedicated revenue source for infrastructure. No, it's not going to operations. It can't go to police. We'll have to find cuts elsewhere to fund those police because we've already made that policy decision that we agree we need three more officers and that we're going to have to shift resources from elsewhere. For me, the question would be, how do we fund Streets and Fleet? The reality is we can't with our budget and I know we need to. If I'm going to support a sales tax increase, it's going to be for Streets and Fleet only, probably with a sunset clause as they mentioned, to at least get us to a point that we can try to figure out how to budget for some of those things in the five-year stretch while being cognizant that we're going to have to budget additional monies toward that beyond that, whatever that sales tax increase would be.
Bill Alderman.
Let me ask you a question. And it's only because of how the money would have to come in. Let's say whatever percent increase in sales tax we talked about, would you entertain the discussion of a 1 or 2 cent per gallon gasoline tax to go towards that street portion and then use somewhat of that general fund revenue towards the police officers? Just, you know, a thought out there rather than, you know, just food for thought.
I wouldn't be opposed to having gas tax, at least that discussion. In terms of the reality of the situation, the reality should be if we were raising taxes, it would be to save us money in the general fund that we're already putting into Streets and Fleet. The problem is we're not. That's, that's the issue we have.
That's where, that's where the, that's where the gasoline tax forces us to put it in the streets.
Not necessarily. It could go to the airport.
Well, in the transportation, but I'm.
I want it specifically defined as for Streets.
Well, and that's what I would want to do if we were to discuss any increase in the gas taxes specifically to go towards Streets.
Does that give you some clearer direction, Molly?
No.
Yeah, Mike?
I just had a technical question. With a proposed sales tax increase, that would be a separate ordinance? It wouldn't be like written into the budget type of thing? We would have to pass a separate ordinance from a technical standpoint, correct?
No, it could be done either way. So it could all be built into one ordinance and you'd have that ordinance, or it could be a separate ordinance.
I think based on the discussion earlier today with the city attorney, he's going to recommend a separate ordinance, but I would defer to him as to the recommendation of the council.
Depending on what action the council chooses to take with regard to other options for the sales tax that relate to some of the county sales tax sharing agreements, we'd recommend structuring that separately. Depending on what you're contemplating taking on sales tax, alterations that are more prospective in application that relate to the budget. If the budget is going to be dependent on a change in the sales tax, then typically we recommend incorporating those into one ordinance. If they're going to be separate considerations or if the council has a preference, we can certainly follow whatever the council's preference is.
Any further discussion? Any further questions?
Well, I'm back to my question. Do you want, it sounds like Alderman Jacobson wants more capital, favors in support of the FAC recommendation, which does put more of the sales tax to capital. Is that the general consensus of the group? Because that's what I can show in these forecasts for you. Right now, it is the way it shows in the proposed budget, which has funding for the police department. So some operation funding included in it.
Alderman Norrico?
I favor showing it in terms of the capital, you know, Streets and Fleet.
I'm not in favor of, I'm not in favor of sales tax increase, so. You know, I understand the potential need for it and the good that can do for it. I just, I don't have a great stomach for it. But I guess if I was going to see it, I can see the, the twofold need to split it out for police and streets. I can see that need.
So it sounds like to me you're all more in line with the FAC's recommendation, which does have funding for three police officers in their recommendation, first quarter percent with the rest of it going to capital and then the 3/4% being for capital, Streets and Fleet. So I can make those adjustments and every scenario of the 1, the half, and the quarter percent sales tax increase will be built on that assumption that's in line with the FAC recommendation on the 1% sales tax.
If you could do that, we would appreciate that.
Got it.
But I think we also want to keep the whole idea of the motor fuel tax increase too.
I think since we know that, that 1 cent equals about $180,000, that we can, we don't need to have that plugged in anywhere else because that'll be a constant. That won't change in it whether it's 1 at 180 or 2 cents at 360. We know that number relatively well.
But we could plug that also, we could plug that in with the caveat that it'd be used for Streets and Fleet.
We could.
Not necessarily airport or Streets and Fleet.
Right. And, and we could. And, but I think after we have the discussion Monday night and what the scenarios we get from Molly, then we'll know that's somewhere that we need to fill in some of those gaps.
Okay.
I think that's something that we need to at least have in the back of our minds.
I think it's important to note that 45, I think it was 40 or 45% of our fuel was sold up at the Oasis as pass-through traffic. So the reality is in moving that ascent to Peace, only half would be in, in the city of DeKalb. And of that half, there is another fraction, whatever that number they, that may be, is coming from out of town or is passing through town. So the reality of passing an MFT tax is it's only, of a 1 penny tax, fractions of that penny are related to actual residents in the term of the overall revenue income. And it helps to bring in some of that pass-through traffic that's on the roads, especially trucks. It helps to get people that are up at the Oasis that are coming through and, and deal with some of those issues too. So again, I think MFT is a good question. I know we've already passed some increases there for the police station, which has now gone to the airport and that was swapped with general fund funding. Again, the question is where, where haven't we taxed enough, I guess? It's a difficult way to put it, but where, where can we capture the best revenue that's not going to hit our residents to cover our needs? That's, that's the question I'm asking.
Do you have enough information now, Molly?
I just want to tell you on the local motor fuel tax, that would be more for Streets. It doesn't cover Fleet. So you'd still have to look for an option for that. And on the note that this could, the local motor fuel tax and somewhat with like sales and sales tax in restaurant, you do pick up visitors. And with the Casey's gas station soon opening on Peace Road, I do believe you're going to get new gas sales from people there at that station.
I commend staff on trying to ascertain what the city council wants to do moving forward. I commend each and every one of you as city councilmen to, I commend you for your, your thoughtful discussion on this. Not that we're not going to continue to have this on Monday night, but I just want to let you know that these are not easy decisions and our constituents out there in wards 1 through 7, I think, realize, I hope they realize the work that you as their representatives are putting into this. And, and as your new mayor, I, I thank you for, for that service. Now, having said that, I am going to assume that we have pretty much discussed what it is that we want to discuss tonight. However, we have a couple of communications in terms of public participation before we have Will and I think it's Dwayne, right? Dwayne make their remarks. We received two letters today. One was from an individual, Melissa Burlingame, in the second ward, which is Alderman Fanukin's ward, sent it to me and, and Bill. And I've talked to Bill and he agreed that I could read this. "I'd like to reiterate my support for fully funding police and fire pensions without sacrificing other city services. The amount that my taxes will increase is minuscule compared with what I already pay for the school district. If these public servants elected to work in the public sector, they would negotiate retirement benefits. The retirement pension for police and fire is a public equivalent of a 401K done through the private sector." And that's from Melissa Burlingame, Ward 2. The other letter is from Courtney Hannah McNamara, Ward 7, sent to myself and Alderman Fager. "I'm a resident of DeKalb, Ward 7, and interested and concerned community member. I'm unable to attend most city council meetings due to conflicts with the schedules of my children, but I would like to voice a concern over upcoming discussion and votes related to our city budget. If possible, I would like this letter to be read at today's meeting. My husband and I chose to live in DeKalb and raise our children here because we believe strongly that we should live in the community in which we work. We are committed to staying here despite many of my husband's colleagues choosing to live away from DeKalb. And we are invested, very invested in seeing important changes made within our community to make it family friendly. The recent surge in crime in the Antiglen North area is of great concern to us, especially as we attend worship services in that neighborhood and worry about the safety of our children, but also about the safety of many children who live there. The proposed cuts to the budget would directly impact the ability of our first responders to do their jobs effectively. If a small tax increase for us would mean safety for the families in our neighborhood, we're willing to do our part to make our town safer for everyone. We would like to seek continued support for our first responders without cuts to important services, and this appears to be a workable solution. Signed, Courtney Hannah McNamara." Now, with that, I'd like to ask our two speakers who have requested to speak to us, I'd like to ask them to go to the podium where they've both been before. And the first speaker is William Heinisch. Will?
Good evening, council. Will Heinisch, local businessman and landlord. I wanted to talk a little bit, of course, about the sales tax 1%. We can't afford any sales tax increase. And I want to ask you this question. Why do you think we have a fund balance in our general fund? Why do you think that has increased? Why have we hit that 25% level? It's because we haven't funded Streets and Fleets. Even in our, my own business model back in 2008, when we went through the downturn, we reduced our own non-essential services and products. The services we provided, the products we sold, we reduced those to boil down to our core product. And like I said last week, we survived and our other competitors around the neighborhoods closed. We had stores in Big Rock, Alburn, Sycamore that closed our competitors. We have to remain competitive. DeKalb, there's a lot of people with solid grit, guts, determination, and a solid foundation. And we need to bring more people into this community to grow. I looked at, if we raise 1%, that takes our restaurant tax to 11%. I searched that on the web and there were some articles in Crane's Business that they were complaining that Minneapolis and Chicago were the two highest restaurant taxes. Chicago at 10.75 and Minneapolis winning at 10.775. DeKalb would surge above and be the highest restaurant tax, bar tax. I talked to Ken Anderson Homes. We rolled back impact fees to try and stimulate growth. An average home, $8,000 to $10,000 in sales tax for all the building materials, concrete, electrical, plumbing supplies is all sales tax. If we raise 1% in sales tax, that drives the value of a home, the cost, $800 to $900. That just negated all the savings we just did in trying to stimulate growth. We're being counterproductive in raising sales tax. We're sending that we tried and the city managers tried to be business friendly, community developments tried to be business friendly. We are becoming un-business friendly. No business is going to want to locate here. When you look at somewhere, it's what the sales tax is. How can I be competitive? And I'll be. And I'll be blunt. If we raise sales tax, it makes our business model uncompetitive. I explained it the last meeting. I'm already absorbing part of that. I will have to look for other options in other areas to move to, to be competitive. I cannot survive with a sales tax increase. We need organic growth, and it's tough. And I asked the council to focus on just providing bare essential services. We need to grow our way out of this. Again, I thank you for your time. Feel free to call on me at any time. Please do not raise sales tax. Thank you.
Okay, Will. Dwayne? Dwayne Brown?
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. I watched on the news today as the president pardoned a couple turkeys. You know, we have things like tax reform, and I'm watching him pardon two turkeys, Wishbone and Drumstick, you know? I mean, don't we have things like, you know, like tax reform, reform more important? We lost the Toyota Mazda plant because we didn't have a shovel-ready site and Illinois was not a right-to-work state. I'm sure taxes were a factor also. I know the DeKalb County Economic Development Commission worked hard on this. Paul Borick said on his trip to China and Japan, unfortunately, they didn't get to meet with the car guys, so they didn't get to discuss that. We face headwinds from the state in attracting any new industry. The Illinois economy isn't looking too hot, according to the latest monthly report from the Bipartisan Commission on Government Forecasting and Accountability, and any select, any slight increase in sales and personal income revenue is being offset by a disastrous corporate income tax dollar amount. The commission's monthly report said manufacturing employment in Illinois, while edging up during the last two months, has been on a declining trend, falling back to the level reached in March of 2011. Thus, most of the jobs seen as economic recovery got underway in the mid-2009 era have been erased, the report stated. The commission's chief economist, Ed Boss Jr., said Illinois unemployment rate is going down because more people have stopped looking for work and Illinois continues to lose manufacturing jobs. Boss said this being the third year in a row, Illinois population, this influences the U.S. House seats, so you're losing influence in the economy too. Illinois personal income tax eked out a 2% gain while sales tax are actually flat. Corporate income taxes, however, had a disastrous year, down 909 million. Illinois is suffering from the weakest recovery since World War II. Illinois population dropped half a percent in 2015 and a total of half a percent in the previous two years. Illinois is one of the Midwest's weakest links, reflecting both soft job creation and the state's descent into fiscal quicksand. The state trails the nation in most metrics. The jobless rate has resumed its descent. The Illinois unemployment rate was 4.9% as of October. New vehicle registration is down, single-family permits are down. However, there are a few bright spots in the state's economy. Fiat Chrysler is investing $350 million to move its production of its top-selling Jeep Cherokee to the Belvedere plant, and of course, Boeing's headquarters in Chicago. I just heard a citizen's proposal to end the state's budget problems. Quote, "The pension contributions weren't adequately paid by the state. The budgets have been, have had deficits for years, so the bills were mounting. Of course, the taxes are way too high, so let the state declare bankruptcy, end welfare, deport the illegals, convert the social programs to charities, close most of the universities, reduce the pensions, consolidate the school districts, eliminate the income tax entirely, and cut property taxes by one-half. Expenditures will equal income," unquote. I don't agree with his harsh proposal, but it does show a high level of frustration with the state's budget funding. Illinois passed the largest permanent income tax increase in state history. I only hope we can expand our economic base in the future. One thing I want to agree with, I've heard this before, is we're top-heavy, and I hear that all the time. Any sales tax increase, any motor fuel sales increase, any property tax increase will hurt. The sales tax increase will force buyers to go to other areas like Sycamore, Rochelle, where it's lower. Gas tax, we're, we're borderline with Sycamore, they'll just go across the border. Property tax, we're already losing population, our home values are, you know, they're terrible. Any tax increase should be out. I, I agree with Mr. Heinisch on that. We've got some harsh decisions to make here, and they better not include any, any, any type of tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. There being no further business, I'd like to ask for a recess for executive session of the city council. Approval to hold an executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in five, ILCS 120 slash two, C1. Motion. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We are recessed.
Mayor, I'm sorry, could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Absolutely. We're voting on recess for executive session of the city council. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Burbick?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
We are now in recess.